I want to welcome everyone to our August school board meeting. And this time, I want to ask Jacob Worts if he would come up and open us in prayer and lay some pledge of allegiance.
In bow and head. Hey, Lord God, I thank you for this day. I thank you that you provide us with another day to come and serve for you, Lord. And I pray for, I thank you for this board. And I pray that you help them make good decisions, Lord. That you give them wisdom and help I can, Lord, which is, which is the thing of amen.
Amen.
Where you stand? Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America.
Native republic, where we're safe. One nation, one God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thanks, Jake.
Next on the agenda are the consent items consisting of our agenda. Minutes of the July 9th, 2019 meeting. An overnight field trip request, 8th grade to Tybee Island in Savannah, Georgia, May 7th through 8th, 2020. An overnight field trip request, junior beta to Washington DC, May 13th through 17th, 2020. And fundraisers for the high school. An additional fundraiser that was given us for PBIS. And the policies for revision, VCBK- E affidavit and JCDAA use of tobacco. Have a motion to accept the consent items?
Say.
Have a second? All in favor?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the same consent item, the policy on the affidavits?
That changes?
The law which that we were using before? Was it changed because of those revisions that we just decided to make? Were they because of any new laws that's been passed? Or rules or regulations that's been passed?
Actually, Corey helped us alter this to meet the current laws and updates.
So it is because of the laws?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor? Yes. Thank you. Do we have any public? Nope. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to our financials. Ms. Buffer.
All right. I've given y'all two this month. One is through the end of June of 2019. So that's 100% of the fiscal year complete. We're still tying up our loose ends on that. So this is not a final, final figure, but this is pretty close. So we're presenting that tonight. And you can see with our revenues, we are at 100.95% total revenue. So we collected more revenues than we budgeted, which is good. On the expenditure side, we're at 93.86%. And that is also good, that we haven't spent all our expenditures. On the balance sheet, you can see our ending fund balance, fund equity is $2,177,000. And if you look at the next page, you'll see that is very close to what we started with at $2,184,000. So we are winding up the year very close to our original fund balance. And as Dr. Light knows, I budget very conservatively. So we actually budgeted to dip deeply into our fund balance. If you look at the next page, this is just an analysis that we've given you before showing how I budget and how the actual change compares to the budgeted change. So this year, we had budgeted $898,000 going into the budget, where actually, we're going to wind up pretty close to even on that. So I looked back at some of the accounts to see why that is. And on the revenues, we collected, and you can follow this kind of on your sheet too, we collected more property taxes, about $81,000 more. We collected more intangible recording and real estate tax and TAV tax than we had budgeted. Our QBE was a little bit lower than we budgeted. You'll remember, part of that was the state health holiday, where we didn't have to pay for one month of state help for the employees, but they also withheld part of our QBE revenue from that. The other one that looks high is the Medicaid income. And that's actually not Medicaid, but that includes the account numbers for Medicaid and other accounts. And that is an on behalf payment. The state provides us with a figure, which this year was $57,906, for on behalf payments that they pay on behalf of our employees for TRS and PSERs. So that figure is provided by the state. I don't budget for it because it changes from year to year. I never know exactly what that's going to be. So that's why that looks a little out of whack there. But anytime the revenue is more, that's a good thing. So that is not a problem. Our expenditures are under. A lot of those are, well, some of those are expected, some not. As I said, we had a state health holiday, so that was $126,000 of that. But we also, I'd over budgeted some on state health. State health is a hard thing to budget because when we have new people coming in, I have to budget for them to say they're taking state health, but then they may or may not take it. And the way the state bills us now is that you only pay the, our share, which is $11,000 for each person, if they take the insurance out. So if I budgeted for them to have insurance and they don't take it, then that's to our benefit, and we don't spend that money. So that's part of that difference. Some of the other things that were, we spent lower than, gas and oil for buses, that was about $86,000. That again, is a hard one to estimate. We do think maybe the propane is helping us with that because we have a good contract with that as we're switching from the diesel buses to the propane. So that's one thing. Social Security. We were lower on the Social Security and Medicare tax, some of the teacher salaries. Some of that is due to, if a teacher goes over leave when they are over on their sick leave, but also if we have a teacher leave in the middle of the year and we have substitute for part of that time, something like that. Our electricity was, we had about $41,000 last year. We were just talking about that. This year, we may not have that, the way this 100-degree weather has been lately. We may be really close on the FY '20 year. The school psychologist, we did not, we had started the year out contracting for a full year of a part-time school psychologist. And I think about December terminated that contract. And then we just used a person to help us out. Well, the current psychologist that we have helped us out, but was not a full-time person. And so we saved money on that as well. The repairs and maintenance on the buses, some of the other salaries, and even the tuition to the Georgia Virtual Schools, about $11,500 lower. And that, we looked at that, and that's just because our students are taking the college classes now rather than doing the online for a lot of those, which is good, if they're getting the college credit for it. So there is an explanation for that, but that is, it's kind of hard to get used to. But you'll see, I'm consistent in doing that, that each year, when you look at that schedule, each year, the budgeted change is substantially, I mean, the actual change is substantially less than the budgeted change. So as long as we're doing that and maintaining our fund balance, I think we're okay. On the FY '20, you have the minutes screen. With 8.33% of the year, we've got one month into the school year, into the fiscal year being reported. And we have 5.24% on our revenues. Those are always a little low at this time of year. You can see, we've got the 8.34% on our QBE. That's the main thing that comes in consistently during the months. On the expenditures, we're at 7.6%. Some of those are a little bit higher, just because we have to pay them at the beginning of the year, some of the insurances, some of the software costs, dues and fees. So those will even out as the year goes along. But right now, they're looking a little bit high in certain cases, but still not out of reason. And so at the end of July, our fund balance was $1.8 million, because we do get spent, you know, more than we took in for that particular month. On the SPOS fund, we had another good month, $62,766.18 on our SPOS. I looked comparing this year to last year, and you have to be careful because we've got one month there, July, that comes down to the bottom, because the collections in June that we get were for the prior years, the prior SPOS. It goes in a five-year term. But even adding that $55,000 into last year's, we were $29,000 over what we collected in 1718. 1718 was $20,000 over 1617. So we're consistently increasing our SPOS, I'm not sure why. But I think that's a great thing, that appears that our economy is recovering for Lincoln County. So that's a good thing. But you can, you can look down the year and see, just about every month, we were higher than last year. So I think the SPOS is doing quite well. On the summary, you can see that in the SPOS account, we've got $547,514 in the SPOS. We've got $373,283.77 in the bond tax. That gives us $927.98 for a total available for future bond payments. The bond payment due soon will be October 1st, is the 416,000. And then April 1st, we'll have that million-dollar payment due. But it looks like we won't have any problem meeting that. So that looks good. We've got about $52,000 in our capital projects account. You'll remember, we didn't transfer any more money over last year. So this is remaining from the previous year. And we have none budgeted for this year at this point. So this would be all we'd have available this year. And I do have one other financial statement, and that, this, there's a copy of that at your desk there. This is what we're proposing to put in the paper to advertise for our millage. We had our digest last week, I think, wasn't it, Dr. Light?
Correct.
And went over and talked with Kenny there about that. And, because we had a couple of questions, but we think we got everything straight. And so you can see, the digest went down this year. Don't really have a big explanation for that. He said part of that was the chem, chem tax? Gym tax, gym tax.
Gym tax.
That went down. But, so that, because that was due to reassessments, we can actually use a rollback rate that's a little bit higher than last year. So the rollback rate that is computed based on the formula is 17.153. Now that is up to the board as to what we pass. But what I'm proposing is that we go ahead and advertise it at the 17.153. Then we can decide at the board meeting on September the 10th, if we want to leave it at that, or if we want to go back to the 17. It would mean a reduction in revenue to do that. But if we advertise at the higher amount, which is not an increase in taxes, that's just the rollback amount, then we can still pass anything under that. We just can't go over that amount without having three hearings. And you'll also see-
Do you have an estimate of the difference if we did not do the rollback?
The, if we use the rollback rate, and let me say one other thing, which is, you see that Forest Land Assistance Grant value is zero this year? They changed the law on that, and they're no longer putting that on the tax digest for the county. That will, it has been coming from the state anyway, but it's literally coming from the state now. So that is a separate item. But based on, you still have to report that land. And that is the, I think it's the conservation land, is people that agree to keep their land for like 10 or 20 years or something in conservation. And the state gives us some money back towards that because we're losing money, because they get such a lower tax rate. So they changed the formula this year. We're not going to get, it won't be equating to that million. It equated back to about $645,000. But that would amount to about another $10,000 for us. So if I include the $10,000 and we use the rollback rate, we would only be short about If we roll, if we don't use the rollback rate and leave it at the 17, we'd be short about $55,575 from what we budgeted, because I use last year's budget, I mean, last year's digest as my budget figure. You know, 96% of that figure. I always budget at 96%. The tax commissioner takes 2.5% as a fee, and then you don't collect 100% of everything. So I always budget at 96% for that.
She said, go ahead.
Okay. That goes for Mr. Chair. Am I understanding that if we do the 17.153, then we'll have a deficit of what?
$17,000.
$17,000.
$17,000.
Let me ask you a question, speak directly to Ms. Buffer. Let me ask you a question, Ms. Buffer. What are we losing in putting 6 through 12? Are we losing funds from that, from the state?
Not this year, no.
So when would we lose those funds?
That will be next year.
And we'll lose the tune of $100,000?
It's about $50,000 in salary plus benefits.
So about $100,000 here, about between 75, 80?
Yeah, probably close to 75.
If my mouth serves me and my head correctly? So-
But that would be next year, not this year.
Right. Mr. Chair, to the superintendent now, can I? Mrs. Superintendent, if we put our schools back, elementary, high school, and wait a minute, let me go back to this. One quick question, Ms. Buffer. That's a principal salary or administrative salary?
That's what the state provides for principals.
For administrative salary? That's what the state provides.
For principals, yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, we're willing to do a 1.53 tax increase on our people here in this county who are already struggling. I don't know if you guys watch the news, but I do, especially the economy part, what affects my pocketbook and everybody else's pocketbook. And the prediction is that there will be a recession, you know? Things are going to get tight and get hard. As a board member, I promise to be a good steward of the people's money. I will not overtax people when there's a quick solution that we can do. And that's to have a middle school, high school, elementary school. I think it was done incorrectly. I think it was done rushed. I don't think we had time to think and deliberate and weigh out the financial responsibility and liability. It was just done at the drop of a hat, which was unfair to us as board members. So I'm not talking about us. But I'm just saying, we really didn't have adequate time to ask the questions that I'm asking. Maybe some of you were slipping the same thing, I don't know. But I don't want to lose money, because in the state of Georgia, once you lose money, it's hard to get it back. I don't know how long it'll be, that they'll penalize us when we get a penalty?
Well, it, no, it's not a penalty. It's just when we report the positions that we have this year, it affects the next year. So if we say we don't have a principal this year, we wouldn't get funded for it next year. If we put one back next year, then we get it back the next year.
But we won't be paying one, is that correct? Because we don't have one.
We don't pay one this year, right.
Yeah, but if we, okay.
We got the benefit this year.
Oranges and apples. Oranges and apples shows that our SPOS has increased drastically over the years. And we are higher every year in certain, in most months than we have been in other months. When you have a position like that, those people are going to spend, I guess, that big salary. They're going to spend more money in that digest. So what I'm trying to say is, it balances itself out. It always does. If you put back the people that you moved, and just for the principal at the elementary school that we had said we were going to do, I think it could solve a lot of issues financially for us. I don't know how the principals would feel about this. I'm just saying this, I haven't asked them, because that's not my job. I don't have to ask them. No disrespect. Okay. So I can't in good faith, Mr. Superintendent, agree to raise taxes? Or even think about it?
Your comments on personnel, though, I'd ask if we hold off that-
I didn't, I didn't call any names.
And I know you didn't mention any names, but as we-
I'm talking about positions. And, and if we can't discuss positions without people being offended, I'm only talking about positions. I have the right as a board member to talk about administrative positions. I am not calling anybody's name, so therefore, I'm not breaking any laws. So Mr. Chair, next time you want to reprimand me, let it be legitimate and don't get a rubbing.
Ms. Freeman, I wasn't reprimanding you. I just asked, could that be further discussed in our executive session?
No, because it's not an executive session matter. We can only discuss according to the affidavits we just approved, the agenda that we already have, unless y'all want to make, but this is not an executive session item. People have a right to hear our discussion on how we going to spend their money, how we going to tax them.
You are right. And that is part of our budget aspect of it. This particular item up on the agenda is the tax digest.
And that's what I'm talking about, because in a-
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
It might help, help Ms. Freeman and myself as well, I got a few questions. But when you spoke with Mr. Iger, is that a projection for this year? I mean-
No, this is what the, what the digest was as of January of 2019.
And it doesn't take into account that all of the businesses and the homes that have come in here is going to bring that back up?
Not since January.
That's right.
If it was something that was built last year, it would be in there. But this is as of January 1 of 2019. So next year, hopefully, the digest will look that way.
There are several businesses, like there already is a business back in that gym tax building. I don't know exactly the tax abatement or whatever it is, but Sub Creek has spent a lot of money, you know, that's, that's going to be taxed. And there's a lot of homes being built right now. So I don't know if it's going to be an issue or not, really. But we hope it won't, as far as what we're talking about now with the-
Well, all I'm asking the board is just, are you okay with me advertising it with a 17.153? And then in the September meeting, we'll decide what we will actually set the rate at. But if I go ahead and advertise it at that, we have the ability to use the rollback rate or go lower if we want to.
You can't go higher, though.
Right. We can't go higher than that 17.153 without having three hearings.
And could you repeat the differences? I wrote down, it would be, if we did the rollback, we'd, we'd be $17,000 less than we budgeted. If we don't do the rollback, we'd be $59,000 less?
55.
55.
The difference is $38,200, correct?
Now, to Ms. Freeman's point, those are, those are specific budget items. And I think it should be addressed, Ms. Freeman.
Well, I wasn't trying to get into the organizational structure. I wanted to deal with the budget part of that, because I've been doing some research and looking at previous, our previous budgets. And it was, you know, when you compare them all, that seems like that would be something that would help us and not hurt us. That's, that's where I was going with that. So-
I think in long-term, it would. Yes, I agree. While we're on this particular item, we have a proposal of our notice that's supposed to go into the journal, has to be published, run into our local paper. So as she, as Ms. Buffer said, this is, we would actually vote, looking at all our budget items, for our, for the actual tax digest and the millage rate, that's what we would set in the September meeting. Again, she said, we can't, if we don't advertise the rollback now, we cannot add that in September. If we add it now, if we advertise it now, we would be able to stay with just the 17 and, and not increase it if we chose.
Quick. So I don't know if in the past, you've had this situation where you had to cut spending somewhere? Is that something you've had to do?
Yes.
We've done that in the past.
Where do you typically do that? What would suffer if we lost $55,000?
To be honest, the way Ms. Buffer budgets, probably no difference, because again, we just looked at $189,000 that we didn't consider spending. So probably would not feel that in the least. Now, if we budget that close, in my opinion, we're doing it wrong. I understand how and why Ms. Buffer does what she does, and I appreciate that. And now, over these years, I have learned how she does it. I'm very comfortable with that 55 number.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I have to say something. The reason I'm concerned, Mr. Chair, is because I was sitting on this board, and I believe you were too, I can't remember, when we had the recession, and we had the cutbacks from the state, and we had to decrease teacher salaries and et cetera and so on. And everybody took a hit. And when we sat there and made that budget, we didn't know if we were going to take that hit. All I'm saying is that the atmosphere is brewing out there. You got to just turn on the radio. Are we losing any of the funds? I know when a middle school is a middle school, they have certain funds that come to that middle school. Do they still come to the middle school since it's 6 through 12? Do I have that right, 6 through 12?
Yes, and we have kept those finances separate, to answer your question, on purpose. And as you remember, part of the conversation was to keep that separate with the anticipation of going back to a middle school. And I don't want to get into the personnel conversation in here.
No, I'm not talking about personnel. But I'm just, I'm talking about money. Please don't anybody go out and say I said something, because I tell you, that's a lie. I'm talking about dollars, only dollars.
They changed the, I know what you're talking about.
Thank you.
It used to be that there was a middle grades and a middle school, and you got more money from middle school, but they've changed that now, and it's all the same.
Okay, thank you. I, this is an estate, we totally the same thing, so we will.
But, but right now, the only thing, to my understanding, from a budget standpoint, with the decisions that were made for this current school year, it would impact our next year funds, about $75,000, correct? That's the, I mean, that's the big issue, that, with what has been, what is currently set in place.
And according to others who do this, it's not, did you factor in the additional monies for that, that's coming down from the governor? That's why I said it was more than 75, because of the additional money that's coming down. And also, I factored in a step increase, just to be on the safe side for whoever, if they had that experience. So that's why I'm saying, that number can fluctuate from 75 to much height.
Well, the 75 is the revenue from the state.
Right.
It's not what we're paying out now.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. It could, the increase, the revenue, revenue from the state. Never mind, I got it in my head.
That's an estimate. I mean, we don't know what they're going to find next year. So I'm just saying, based on this year's, that's what we think it's going to be. They haven't passed their budget yet, so like, I can't say for sure.
Yeah, but we would lose this year and next year.
Next year. So I'm good to advertise the 17.153? I mean, I don't think you have to vote on it. I just want to-
We still need to vote.
Oh, you do need to vote, okay.
The, we have a proposal to advertise at the rollback rate of 17.153 millers. Do we have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Madison. Do we have a second? I'll make the second. All in favor of advertising at the 17.153 millage rate? Okay. Opposed? Okay. We have, that motion has been defeated, 2 to 3. Okay, do we have another motion then?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that we keep the millage rate at the current, the 17.
Okay. We have a motion to advertise the millage rate at 17. Do we have a second, Ms. Barza? All in favor? Pass or no? I know it's not on the agenda, but since it's been, the subject has been brought up, what can we discuss concerning the principal position in that amount that we've been using for next year?
Well, again, in, in the process of trying to make the decision to keep the middle school in place, we had talked about whether we would make that change at the half year, or whether we would make that change at the end of the year. I don't want to undermine any principal's authority, I don't want to undermine any administrator's authority. So, I would rather have this conversation as a personnel matter, discuss it with the board, let the board know where I'm at, and then from there, we can announce it as we see fit in open session.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
During that time, um, let me speak. During that time, when we discussed this, are we allowed to have some of the administrators come back and give us, give the board kind of a report on how it's been going thus far? I know it's very early into the school year, but um, as a board member, I would certainly like to hear how it's been going since that combined two.
Okay.
As long as they stay, as long as they stay.
Do we, Mr. Chair, do you need a motion to add that to the personnel for tonight's discussion in executive session?
It can be, I mean, we don't have a listing of personnel that's on it, is that already on your list?
Was that already on your list?
It's on my mind, it's not on that list, but I was going to try to explain to the board what I had in mind for personnel. But personnel is definitely on our list.
Let me test it.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is the non-resident enrollment request.
We have a, a student that is, I'm sorry, the parents want their student to come to our school. They are currently enrolled in a different district within Georgia. They would like that student to come to our school, and they state on the letter the reasons that they feel that it is more appropriate for their child to come here. They also have other family members that are here and are very happy with what they have heard. I am recommending that we approve this student to come to Lincoln County.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Freeman.
Second.
Do we have a second? From Ms. Hype, all in favor? Yes.
So, they'll be here for the count, right?
That's the plan, yes ma'am.
It's in October?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next is our purchase of a bus.
We have, excuse me, we have the opportunity to purchase an additional propane bus. It is a sixty-six passenger propane bus for a final cost of ninety-nine thousand eight ninety-nine seventy-five. We do receive some funds from the state, it does not pay for the entire bus. Ms. Buffer, I believe it's seventy-seven?
Yeah, but this is actually the one that we have with the budget now.
This one's in the budget, okay. It's not the one that you were talking about, of the seventy-seven, okay? And as you'll notice from the second sheet, it gives you an idea of the breakdown of the options that are on this bus to make it an appropriate bus for Lincoln County, and you can see the final price down there on the bottom. So, I recommend that we follow our budgeted item and purchase this bus.
Ms. Buffer, is that in line with our, what we budgeted?
Yes.
Do we get a customer loyalty discount?
How many buses have, oh, I'm sorry, were you talking to Chris?
Yeah, I'm just, I saw we had a customer loyalty discount of considerable amount.
Yeah.
What was your question?
Uh, how many buses have we bought this past school term, twenty eighteen?
Eighteen nineteen, I believe it was two, correct?
I think we just bought one last year.
Just one last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the year before that?
Well, we bought three, but one of those was replacing one that we were having, so two, we added two to fleet.
Okay.
But that's because we got the bond bus that year.
Two last year.
We get one from the state every other year, so that's what, one of those was a bond bus, and one was a regular bus. Although, like Dr. says, it's not, they don't pay for it in full, we have to pay part of it, but um.
How much we paying out of local tax dollars?
This one is budgeted, we had budgeted a hundred and one thousand, so we actually got a little bit lower.
But how much of that hundred and one thousand is local tax dollars? And how much is state revenue?
This one is all local.
This one's all local?
We, we budgeted to buy one, and then when we found out we had the bond bus, we didn't find that out until after we passed the budget. So, we, we can add another one for about twenty-five, thirty thousand.
So, is that ninety-nine, eight ninety-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Ninety-nine. I remember one buses cost, nevermind. Show my age, I remember when they cost, bought anything.
I got to quit, I'm sorry.
My last point here, this, the last time we bought a bus, I could have swore it was sad. I even made note of it, that we won't have to buy no buses for a while.
We always buy one bus a year and try to buy two if.
And we got to buy it right now.
Well, we don't have to, but we already have that one in the budget, so we felt like we'd go ahead and buy that one, and then once we get the, if we approve an amended budget to show that we've got the money to cover the difference between the state bond bus and that bus, we'll buy a second one.
Why can't we just wait on the state bond bus? And save the taxpayers a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, if you get too far behind in your bus schedule, you're going to have some really old buses.
How many old buses, we don't have that many old buses no more.
Well, we run twenty-two routes, I believe. So, if we don't buy, and usually buses are ten years, that's their, pretty much their life.
Right.
So, if we don't buy two a year, or at least one a year, we're getting, we're going to wind up with some really old buses.
Mr. Chair, the transportation administrator's not here tonight.
That's right.
But I, I think we need to have in front of us, how many new buses we have? Whether they're one year, two year, three years, and all down to ten. Because making a decision without all the information is frustrating, because we don't know how many old buses, nobody can tell us. We don't know how many new buses that are less than five years old. And I could make a better decision of spending the taxpayers' money if I knew how many old buses are running routes. Does that make sense to anybody besides me?
I can tell you, we have less than ten that are less than five years old.
And I, my question is, how many we have without air conditioning? I know it's two or three.
That's the other one.
So, we really need to get this bus, because it's sweltering.
So, we are still running buses without air conditioning?
Yes, ma'am. We still have three that do not have air conditioning in them, yes.
So, we need to go and buy three this year.
Yeah, yeah. That's the next one point, I didn't know we were still running buses without air.
Unfortunately, we still have three.
Well, I'm glad I know, but I don't know.
So, what is the long-term plan for that? Will you get two next year? Will we get two buses next year?
Hopefully, we'll get two this year.
We're hoping to get two this year with the bond bus.
I hope to.
So, that would be two, and then we just have one.
And that one is a spare, isn't it? Will that cover all the buses then, as far as routes?
Well, again, we're running three right now, so.
You're running three?
Right.
With no spare?
No, 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 we're running three with no air, right now.
You have a spare with air?
I don't believe we do, or we would have swapped it.
Okay, all right.
I hope they're very short routes.
They are, they're on our, they're on our shortest routes possible.
Now, Mr. Chairman, this is what I'm saying, this is the information we need to make decisions. It could have stopped the long discussion, to say we're doing this for the betterment of our kids, because we got three buses with no air.
So, by the end of next year, we should have all the buses ready.
Right. Because I live on riding the heat this heat.
And, and part of it is the upgrade to the propane, too, because propane saves us in maintenance and fuel.
Well, how many gas buses do we have left? That's the other thing, because it may be more than three.
That's a lot more than a gas.
So, so.
They're diesel, obviously.
It's diesel, they're all diesel.
So, can, well, I call diesel gas, too, but can we, then, Mr. Chair, ask the superintendent to have the transportation director to have that information for us at our next meeting?
I will have it available.
At the, if the rest of the board agree, I'm not dictating, I'm just throwing it out there, if y'all agree, y'all agree?
I think we, I think we went ahead and budgeted for it this year, I will make a recommendation.
Well, I mean, that's still, I mean, the information can still come to us.
Yeah, I would like to have the information, yes, definitely.
But we do have a proposal in front of us for the purchase of a bus.
I'll make a motion, we purchase that bus.
And I'll second it for the sake of our children.
We have a motion, we have a second, by Ms. Freeman, all in favor? Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a contract for CSRA RISA membership.
This is an annual membership to allow us to be a member of the CSRA RISA. And we also pay for technical services from them. Those technical services can range from assisting us with a projector, to repair it or replace it, also to help us with printers and those kind of things, and they do a very good job of helping us with some of the mechanical things within the technology. So, I am recommending that we keep our basic membership with RISA and pay for the technical services and repair for a grand total of eight thousand seventy-six dollars.
Since we do have several new board members, can you go into a little bit more of all that, that is involved with us being a part of RISA? And the benefits of that membership?
RISA establishes an opportunity for us to have meetings with all the superintendents in the CSRA. We are in a RISA group that is a CSRA. We have an opportunity to share in professional development. That could be anything from a new reading series, a new reading style, to special education, professional development. They have a vast array of different things going on in that RISA all the time. Now, there's multiple risas in the state of Georgia, we happen to belong to that particular one. So, we get a lot of advantages. In the past, when we've had a hearing impaired or a visually impaired student, we have used RISA to assist us with those students. So, they provide services for small districts that we can't afford to purchase for, say, one child or two chi, two children. So, they do give us a lot of benefit, and it helps us to be part of that.
Does it impact our CTAE? Does it have any, I don't know, it seems like I've been in some meetings, and it may just been where it was, it didn't involve.
We have our own resource network that does the same, serves at the same capacity.
Okay.
Ours isn't as expensive.
Does this, Mr. Chair, would you ask, Ms. Jordan, does that, hers also cover the school district? Will it cover all the schools, or just?
Did you hear that?
Yes, it actually covers administrators to attend different things, the counselors at each of the schools to attend workshops for free. Now, we have to cover travel, but they can attend the workshops for, for no charge.
How, will you say, Mr. Chair, would you ask the young lady? Uh, what's the difference in the price?
That would be very.
There's two different things, though.
I know, but I'd like to know the name of it at least.
Well, it's our, we, they allocate, they go ahead and decide how much money is going to each of the districts based on our FTE. So, we, I think ours is about a thousand dollars every year, because we're so small. But we have the opportunity to go to all of these different workshops, you know, no matter our size. So, many of our teachers take advantage of that, and so it's available for guidance counselors as well. So, it's a, it's a separate grant that we get, federal grant, that covers all that, so that's not, I, it is cheaper, but we never see any, it never has to exchange hands that way.
Oh, no, 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 I, I'm familiar with that, it's probably written in the parkings.
It is, yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm familiar, I was, I used to work with Walmart, so that had your position. Yes. Um, wow. Y'all know I'm a penny pitcher, so. What wouldn't it do, Mr. Superintendent, that RISA does?
First of all, it wouldn't have the superintendent interaction that we have on a monthly basis. It wouldn't offer the same style of professional development. I'm sure theirs is basically CTAE-directed, as opposed to instructional-directed, or IDEA.
Well, it doesn't really, I mean, it covers everything, there's not so much special ed, but it does cover guidance counselors, you know, very STEM-focused on procedures, in fact, some of the science teachers get certifications to attend those same things.
Mr. Chair, I know you're tired of me, I'm tired of me, but, but I, I don't think that. But could we get some information and just table this to the next meeting without affecting our relationship with RISA? Have our membership ran out yet?
Well, let me, let me, how many years, how many years have we been a part of RISA?
Well, every year that I have been here, but I don't know how many prior to that.
Every year that I've been here.
And I think it's an extremely beneficial system that we need to be a part of, in my opinion. I'm glad that CTAE has one, but it's very different compared to what this one offers for superintendents, for administrators, for teachers. It's a different set, they're totally separate.
And, and I get you, I get you, but y'all have SSA. Well, is it SSA or SA, Superintendent's Association?
GSSA.
GSSA, Georgia Superintendent's Association. Uh, administrators have workshops that they can get from other organizations, and have been, because um, I was on, so, I don't think we're losing, I would just like to know what's out there. We've been with RISA since I was first on the board in ninety-six, so I know we've been a part of RISA for a very long time. And I don't have no problems with RISA. I, but I do have a problem with, if there's something equal to it, not less than, but equal to it, then I go with the cheaper. I don't always go cheap. It depends on what the ingredients are, and I feel, so I have a lot of sodium, I don't want it. So, if it's not going to meet the bill of the teachers and everybody, then no, but we should at least have the information to, to, to. That's what I think, just my opinion, nobody has to agree with me.
Do you have something to add to that? Mr. Williams?
Oh, yeah, well, I, we participate, I'm in charge of professional development, and we work with them on our professional development. In terms of being a member, we get, such as we send our media center specialists. Instead of paying twenty-five dollars, we pay a ten dollar registration fee, we just register, they offer, we got two teachers doing the get the endorsement, thirteen hundred. If they were not members, then we would have to pay, I don't think they offer it to none, it may be twenty-five hundred. I, I don't know if that's the exact number, I know it's much more significant if you're not, if your district is not a member of the RISA, of the, to like, for the get the endorsement.
Oh, the get the.
We have a teacher doing with the TAP program, just enroll, and if they're not a member, then they can, they won't get involved. So, I know personally, we use it a lot for the service, and the free services of getting the language art literacy person to come in and work with our middle school teachers. There are other risas, like, like the one in Henry County, but the thing is, the Atlanta Metro, they're all risas, but they're not close to it. So, that's the thing, the proximity to Dearing, rather than if we were in another RISA that offers, we won't have that proximity, we'll have to pay out of local funds to travel for the teachers, so proximity helps us. Augusta, pretty much all the, there's not, I don't know where the closest RISA, it may be Athens, in terms of the RISA. I haven't researched hers, but I know we use it a lot, think of it kind of like Sam's Club. You can, you can, I'd say, you can get your stuff in bulk, a little cheaper, then overall, I think if you average it out, you, you, we, it'd be cheaper to get those services than rather us going and signing up teachers to go to a workshop and spending, send them to Atlanta, spend two twenty-five registration, where we can go send them to RISA for ten dollars, to get that, to get that. So, that's kind of how we, I know I use it on the professional development side, to help the freighter costs, rather than having to send people overnight and spend the money to send them somewhere. We can get that service there, but if we're not a member, we're not going to get that, that benefit on the professional development side. We won't get that discount on the professional development side.
Let me show that I'm not completely ignorant about RISA. I was in a school in one of the counties not far from here, that was taken over by the state. RISA did a lot of our training and workshops. We had workshops on how to write lesson plans. On Saturdays, we had to go for a full day and learn how to. On Saturdays, we had to go for a full day and learn how to discipline children. So I understand the product. I want to know what the other product offers. I know personally what RISA has to offer. I used to go over to their meetings when they had them with Superintendent Edmonds back in the day. So I understand that product very well. I just want to know the other product. That was, that was my whole point. I know RISA. I got 35 years of RISA, and it's a good product. I'm not bashing their product.
I don't, I don't know RISA, but I do now. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Can we make a motion to approve it with the, with the attach to it that we want to look at other resources in next year possibly? Unless, unless this group is very happy with what we got. Superintendent said he strongly recommends it, so.
Absolutely, I'm extremely happy for it.
Can I make a motion like that?
Ben?
All right, that's why I just did it.
All right, we have a motion to pay and join the membership for RISA for this year and for the superintendent to see if there are any other options for 2020. We have a second.
Second motion.
All right, we have a second. Ms. Parksdale, all in favor? You know. Next on the agenda is a graduation waiver.
You have the student's name and application there in front of you, signed by Dr. Gumby. This student, the audience obviously can't see that name, but this student has met requirements according to Dr. Gumby, and I would recommend that we award the graduation diploma based on House Bill 91.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the recommendation.
We have a motion by Ms. Freeman. We have a second by Ms. Massey, all in favor? You know. Thank you. Okay, CTAE presentation.
Thank you very much for, Dr. Light, for letting me come and speak to everybody tonight. I'm going to have Mr. Williams go ahead and advance. And I apologize, I'm exhausted, it's been a long day, so I appreciate the time that you give me. I would like for you to take out the little handy-dandy packet of stuff that I left for you earlier because we'll kind of go through this, and I don't want to insult anybody's intelligence. I know that some of you have been on the board before. If you have any questions during the presentation, please stop me. Better yet, if you would ever like to sit down and talk about some of the things, because I may go kind of quickly, I would love to sit down and talk to you about CTAE and, you know, its advantages for all of our students. But for the sake of tonight's presentation, I'm going to kind of hit the high points from last year, talk about what exciting things happened this summer, and then talk about kind of where we are looking at starting this school year this year. So what I'd like to start off with is recognition of two of our CTSOs. So if you take out your packet, I've got some stuff from the GATI conference, and fortunately, it's a year behind. But they told us to give it to our Board of Education, so I'm giving it to you to look at. I hate that it's a year behind altogether. The other thing that you have there is our CTSO. So many of you hopefully are aware that we have four CTSOs. We have Skills USA, FCCLA, FFA, and HOSA. And the information about each of those CTSOs are in here. And a lot of people don't realize that CTSOs are an extension of our classroom. So the kids are taking what they're learning in the classroom, and they're applying it for different competitions around the state. And so we had two this summer to compete. We had FCCLA that went to California. And our state president, if you want to take a picture, take a look at where he is, he's on page 15, he wasn't able to come tonight. But he is our state president for FCCLA in Georgia. So he and Ms. Pilkington and two other kids, CJ Turner and Gabby Doty, went to California for a few days. And I also included, Ms. Pilkington won an award for all of her hard work with our CTSO, and I'm sure many of you are aware. She left us, we were very disappointed, but we still know that she laid great foundational work with the FCCLA and hope for good things to happen this year. But I do want to recognize Mr. Holden, he's here tonight. Unfortunately, our winner for that wasn't able to come. But I'm going to let him talk a little bit about what Michael, if you don't mind.
No.
I'm putting you on the spot. Michael did this summer, Michael Bowen is a junior this year. He competed this summer.
Michael Bowen, he competed in the sheet metal contest with Skills USA. And to make it to the nationals, he had to compete on the state level. He won the state sheet metal contest. He advanced to the Skills USA Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky. And I think it was roughly 25, 27 competitors across the nation in that contest. And out of that contest, he took third in the nation. And that is, that's amazing. I've done this for a while, and for a first-time student to go and get third in the nation, that's the absolute best I've ever seen. I had one dude, fourth in the nation, his first time out. Michael Eaton did better than him, and that boy was a junior. And Michael, at the time of him going to this, he was just a sophomore. Did a phenomenal job. I was kind of left empty-handed from my previous competitor moving, and I was looking for somebody. And I was pretty much begging anybody in the class that he was in last year, "Come on, somebody step up, somebody step up." And nobody really wanted to do it. And he finally came and said, "Well, I think I'll do it." And he worked really hard all school year long, practicing. And once summer got here, we would come and practice at least one day during the week all the way up to when we went in June. And, you know, it was, it was a whole week. We, you know, we drove eight hours to Louisville, got there, spent the whole week there, and then drove eight hours home on Saturday morning. And, you know, they had all the projects on Friday morning. Contest is actually on Thursday. Friday morning, you can go pick the projects up. And so he's like, "I don't really feel like going." I was like, "Well, I'll go get it. You just stay and rest, and I'll go get it." So they had them all in a pile. And they had one pile over here and one pile over here. Well, you could look at this pile over here and tell that wasn't a single one of them in the running for win. These were all, they looked bad. Well, then there's this group over here, and I started trying to look and see, "Well, do they have a position first, second, third, and all this?" And his was in the good pile. So I'm trying to guess at how good he did without saying anything and then me saying, "Oh, man, you got this, you got this, and we're disappointed." But he was very, very confident the entire time, probably more confident than I was in him, that he did as well as he did. And, you know, they called his name, and he got third in the nation. And it was, it was a tough project. He worked, they gave him eight hours to do the project. And he worked just about the entire time, all the way. He had probably about 20 minutes left over is all he had. But he did. And y'all know him, he's a real skinny boy, he's pretty quiet. He had a brother, Zach Bowen, that graduated last year and competed in skills, I think in plumbing on the regional level. And then he's got another brother, Adam, who plays football for the school. So their family is really in the community and everything, but if you, you know. I didn't do too good on taking pictures. They kind of all had them all jumbled up every time I turned around. And I didn't do like Ms. Smith and think to get one of just him, so. And I wish I had, but he did a great job. And he's, he's a really good kid, and he was very, very, very deserving of this, and I'm very proud of him.
Yeah, so we put a picture of Michael on the website under medals, the section of the website, so you can take a look at it. I think it was one that you had sent me before. He's, he's actually working on this project. So next up is testing. So at the end of last year, we do our end of pathway assessment test. I've given you a copy of this because I know this isn't the best here. We give, try to give the test at the end of each semester. And most of the bulk of our testing last year in December was for our CNA students who tested with Ms. McKinney. And then the majority of them end up taking the test in May. And we try to make sure it doesn't rely with our end of course test and AP test. So it's a lot of juggling around. And so this is how we, we fared this year. I gave you a rundown of who, how many students were tested, how many passed. And I know that I need to update this graphic because I have way too many years on here, but I, this is, I've been doing it since, this is as many years as I've been doing it. So I like to see the progress. I like to see that there's growth and, you know, and to kind of see where we're going with things. And if you look at it, you see that food science, you know, we've kind of changed some things along the way. So that shows why there's a difference. And I hate just to put it, just putting a number there and you don't really know why that number's different than the next year. So overall, pretty good. We know that there's some areas that need work. And I mentioned this at previous presentations about some factors that affect our testing. And a lot of that has to do with students have a gap year. They may take an entry-level class their freshman year, and then they wait a couple of years and take another. And so you lose some, some information during that time. Unfortunately, for scheduling purposes, we do end up having to like lump two, level two and third, level, second and third level classes together. So that can kind of affect some of that as well. But the teachers work really hard, you know, making sure the students are as prepared as possible. Okay? So where we're going for this year, so I've given you, if you can see it, our master schedule for this year, because I think it's good to see where we are currently, fall and spring semester. I will point out a couple of things, and you'll see that what I was just mentioning about some of the classes being joined together. Mr. Holden teaches the medals, and students complete a welding pathway, but we're offering sheet metal as well after they finish the welding pathway. You see a combination of intro and carpentry one, it's just a matter of, you know, scheduling conflicts. And Mr. McGill teaches a basic ag class at the eighth grade level, and students get a high school credit at eighth grade. And because of that, we, we are offering a new ag mechanics class this year because to address those kids that may be interested in continuing with agriculture. And he's teaching that in the spring. So he was, he was really excited about that because he was able to get some Honda engines donated so they can actually take those apart and put them together and see if they work and those kind of things. And again, Ms. McKinney was fortunate to have two CNA classes, so she'll be taking about 24 kids to Lake Crossing, starting probably, what, next week, week after next? And she'll be taking a group just about every week. So I've given you a list of the classes that we offer here, and you'll see what I was talking about, offering the sheet metal class. Mr. Connors, to address the kids that have completed the carpentry pathway, he wanted to offer a fine furniture class for some of those kids who really wanted to stay in construction a little longer. Ms. McKinney offers a public care pathway. We haven't had as many kids that want to go that route, but if they don't want to do the CNA, we do let them take the National Healthcare Science Test. And if you look back on the, how the testing, they don't always do the best because it's a, it's a pretty hard test, and it's long. I think we find out that the longer the test is, the worse the kids do because they just, they can't stick with it long enough. But those are all the classes that we offer for this school year. Any questions on that part? Before I go, let me make sure I left, I mentioned the, you know, carpentry and middle school credit at ag level. Last year, for the first time, we were given diploma seals. And I included that, I kind of gave you more of that last presentation, but it kind of helped explain this a little bit better. We actually only gave the pathway seal this last year because that was what we were going to focus on. We felt like that the other two areas, we needed a little bit more work on. Most of the systems, well, I'll say most, that's probably an overexaggeration there, but some of the systems offer a, they focus on Georgia Best through their business program. And since we don't have a business program, it's hard to kind of funnel that through that, that pathway. So we can do this with work-based learning, but we kind of need to have it state-approved. So I need time to kind of figure out what that needs to look like for our students. And part of that component is probably going to be that they complete a pathway in order for them to do work-based learning and to earn this seal. The leadership, we will have one student this year that graduates and gets this seal, and that's going to be Matthew Penrow because he is a state officer for the FCCLA program. And then Beatrice Jackson will also get it when she graduates because she is a region officer. So when students take on that more leadership role with their CTSOs, they can earn those seals. But the, this is what we gave this year, pathway seals for completing the coursework. Distinguished means they completed the coursework and they passed the test. So they got that on their diploma for the first time this year, which was kind of cool. So how that breaks down, I kind of wanted to get this. I didn't, one part to get on that, but I was, I was, that's okay, go ahead. I didn't update it, I guess. I was debating whether or not I should tell you this information because that wasn't my area, but I was curious, so I found it and did some data myself. But based on the class from last year...
We got it up here.
You remember.
Basically, yeah, well, I haven't. Forty-two of the seniors that graduated, and there were a total of 92, completed one pathway, one CTAE pathway, I should say. Two, eight, eight students completed two pathways, and there was one student that completed three pathways, and he passed all of the tests associated with that pathway. So that was a big thing. And there was 92. I pointed out this, this, we had 14 students that completed the coursework, but they just didn't pass the test. And so then I got to thinking, "Well, I wonder how everybody else played out." So then I looked up students, and we haven't done this because you have to submit what the fine arts pathway looks like to the, to the state of Georgia. But we had nine students that completed a fine arts pathway. That would be art, musical theater, band. And then the advanced placement, we had 22 students that completed that pathway as well, meaning that they took one AP class in a academic area. So I was pretty impressed overall. If you look at the combination of these CTAE students that took, completed the coursework but didn't pass the test and then completed the pathway, that was about 75% of the seniors took a CTAE class and did well in it. So I think that's important to point out. Onto financials, I have in front of you, because, kind of, and we hit on it a little bit, and I'm going to explain a little bit more. But this worksheet here that I've given you are the core indicators. And whenever the federal government comes in, they, they're looking at these. So I think it's important to point out that CTAE is a whole picture. So as you, as you notice, we depend on math to make it where our score is looked at favorably. Same thing with the language arts and technical skill attainment and just graduating. We are fortunate because we are a good school, great school, that there was no improvement plan. Because anytime those numbers get out of whack and they don't meet the state level that they're expecting, they tell us that you're going to have to do something, spend some money to address those deficits. We are fortunate that that's not happened the last two years for us. So that, and if there is, and that's, we've got to address some sort of, what are we doing to help with those math scores being increased or help with the secondary placement kind of thing? So that changes from year to year. So I'm very, I'm very glad that, that we are fortunate that we do so well. One thing, though, is because Perkins was reauthorized, we are now under Perkins Five. And so I did find out over the summer that we are going to be looking at these again, and they're going to adding, they're going to be adding some core indicators, and we have training in September to address that. So that makes me a little nervous because just like I think Coach Williams was involved with the CNA, the Comprehensive Needs Assessment. Dr. Light, the same thing is going to have to be done for CTAE. So we're going to have to have some sort of plan on what we're doing with the money, how are we spending it to address each of these different areas? So they're going to start adding some more core indicators to that. So, you know. Next thing I included in there is a kind of a breakdown of all the grants that we get, and I applied for these in May. The deadline for this is May 15. I've done this, the same grants have been applied for as long as I've been CTA director. I kind of, what I gave you are copies of the assurances, kind of what's expected of us by accepting these grants. CTE, so today, that's, two teachers are getting that, those funds. We do have a new food science teacher. Unfortunately, we had applied for the industry certification grant under food science with Ms. Pilkington. And I really struggled since I found out that she was leaving, whether or not I should get the money back or try to keep it. It's $10,000. But I talked with Dr. Gumby at length about this, and we just felt like that Ms. Atkins really needed a good shot at doing a good job of her program, and we could not add that on her, even though the money was so nice and would be so great to get. So I just sent an email today saying that we regretfully had to decline the $10,000. Hopefully, she will be in a position, after she's been here a year, to reapply for it because they really want you to have two to three years of experience, proof of your program, what you're doing with your program. The CTSO is a big component of it, and even though she has a solid one, she has to be able to keep it going. So we're hoping that we can reapply for this grant. Extended year grant, that's for, for my part, my salary for into the summer. I worked 20 extra days for that. The CTE apprenticeship is a work-based learning grant. Supervision also is for the CTA director. You get that based on your FTE count. And then for the first time, I think... And then for the first time I think ever, or in a long, long time, the ag extended day and year was fully funded for Mr. McGill, which has not happened. And so he works 40 extra days throughout the year in order to get these, these funds. They, students, teachers have to maintain a program of work. So there's certain things that they have to address every month and with their program in order to get these funds. So that's all state grants. The federal grants, though, we've already talked about the professional development one, that's out of my hands. That's only for CTA teachers and councils and administrators. So it's not for any, any teacher to attend or to benefit from this. It is a great benefit for us, but it's already predetermined as to how much it's going to be. And I just say, okay, we'll take it. And Dr. Light signs off on it, so I really don't have any, we just take advantage of it. So that's, that's federal money. So it's, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for us. I'm glad that it's cheaper for us because of our size. It would be bad if it was, you know, a lot more because it would be kind of ridiculous. Program improvement, that is improvement for our programs. That is this figure here for this year and that of course is based on FTE. And then Perkins Plus is what we use for our end of pathway assessment. And that is a decrease from, from last year, mainly because of our FTE and the number of students taking the test. This is, I could get up to $15,000 for tests, but it needs to be justifiable. So it's a good thing because the most expensive test that we give right now is Ms. McKinney's test for the CNA, which is a state test, which is $112 per student. Now, once we complete the cybersecurity end of pathway, that assessment's over $300 per student. So that's something else to consider as we go forward with that. Local contribution this year has been 18,000. I, I can't help but tell you that I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I've given you a handout of kind of the progression of our FTE and the amount of money locally that we were given in a comparison between state money and, and local money. It's going to be a challenge for us to be able to meet the needs in our classroom based on the funds that we're getting. Last year, I was able to give each teacher about $3,000 to spend for their program. This year, I'm having to tell them they only have about 2,000. So it really doesn't matter what you do for a group of eight kids or a group of 15, 18 kids. If Mr. Holden or Mr. Connors, if they need to be, build a wall to demonstrate something, the wall still costs the same amount of money, no matter the number of kids. So if at any point the board sees fit to allocate funds for CTA, we would greatly be appreciated. We have a very good and strong program. Kids are being very successful, as you heard, they're traveling, they're doing things that I've never even gotten to do. I've never been to California, I've never been to Kentucky. So, you know, I, I love the fact that we're allowing that, especially for this small system. And we offer things that students in neighboring counties do not have. You know, we offer a variety, it's very diverse, which is a plus for us. So with that said, things coming up in the future. HOSA does a blood drive, they are going to be every Fri, or these are on Fridays. Ms. McKinney is able to get a contribution from Shepherd. So last year, she used that contribution to buy a new wheelchair for her classroom. And then she bought one also for the school, which was a good thing, so they had that. When her HOSA is more active, because they had, HOSA had some changing of the hand at the guards last year and they weren't as active last year. She's able to use those funds to help offset some of the costs for them to attend competitions and things like that. I've got two advisory meetings based on Perkins. I'm required to have at least two meetings and those are the dates. I hope that many of you will make an effort to come. And then of course, every year we've been, for, for the last several years, we've hosted a college and career fair and each year it grows. I've given you a handout on an invitation to come. So if you would like to set up a booth or just come talk to the kids, I've had several of them comment, you know, I don't, didn't really plan to go there, but they talked, told us a lot about the program there and it was eye-opening. So even though the kids may not go in that particular field or may not go to that particular college, it does open up doors that otherwise they wouldn't know anything about. And then we try to host two job shadowing days per year. So if you're willing to let a student come and shadow you for the day and follow you around and ask you crazy questions about what you do and why you do it and what kind of degree you had to get it to be able to do it, then I would love for you to let the kids come and, and do that. And feel free to advertise that at your place of employment or business. Other than that, I'm, I'm excited about the school year. It's been very busy so far. Kids are doing great things. So if at any point you want to come and visit, we would love to have you and see what's going on in the CTA department. Any questions? I know I talk really fast, I give you a lot of information in a short amount of time, so.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many people in senior class this year?
Eighty-ish.
I think, I think like 88, I'm not sure.
Eighty-eight? Okay. Why is the money going down, local funding?
Well, it, it's based on FTE, so.
What local funding is?
Yes. And, and what was it, 42? And. And, you know, a lot of that can be attributed to the fact that students are taking the dual enrollment classes. They're not going into a CTA area at all. I know that it's kind of been up and down. At some point, there seems to be, there was more money available some years ago to put towards it. I don't really have the answer for that.
Maybe you asked for the money.
Maybe so.
You have, okay.
No, no, maybe I need to, maybe I need to openly ask for it.
I mean, I, I just wanted. That's my background, I like CTA myself, so.
Me too, that's why we have so many choices in Lincoln County, because that's my background.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. I'll tell you, y'all are really putting out a lot of good work, a lot of good students.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know why the number fell so, so drastically from last year, honestly. Maybe it's just the number of kids in general in school.
So, but these numbers that we're looking at, that's per semester, per year?
The FTE.
Yes.
The 40, I'm not sure how that's calculated. It's, uh, for, what, what is it?
The sheet where she gave us, it says like for, FY '20, it says 46 for FTE, CTA, FTE allotments.
From the sheet I gave the principal? Yeah, that's from the QBE allotment sheet. So it's a, it's an average of the last two years.
Is that enrollment in, specifically in CTA classes or?
It's the FTE, so it's equivalent enrollment.
It is, it's not individual students. There's so many segments that they take.
And that's a whole year, is that right? Does that have 50? So it's, I'm looking at 51 students and there's 92 in seniors. Is that, that's not a good way to look at it, is half of the students or?
You can't, you can't really do that, yeah.
Because it, it can be a ninth grader taking it, so it's nine through 12.
Oh, that's right.
But, but it's a, they take it by segments, so, you know, it's one class a day.
Something else confuses.
That's why I gave you the handouts. Looking over, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many CTA programs was, that again, that we teach every day?
So.
How many CTA classes do we have every day?
Well, I have to add them up, but there are six teachers.
It's on, yeah, right there.
Yeah. They take out, middle school, Mr. Holden teaches middle school this semester.
Right, my, my question was, how many, now we have six teachers. What's the average class size per teacher?
That depends on what block it is. Like right now, I have on average 12 for two classes, 11 in one, 13 in another. But I know Mr. Holden has, has 20 something in one class and then eight in another, 10 in another.
My middle school class, I have 20, 21. And then 13 in my OCC safety class.
Right. I was asking for a safety reason, probably because I can understand the higher number being in middle school because you don't do the same thing with them as you do for high school. And they don't get a chance to touch the equipment or whatever. So that's why I was asking that. And are we making sure Mr. Superintendent, I mean, Mr. Chair, that everything is bolted down? Everything is safety?
I have it all through there, Ms.
It is, Ms. Freeman.
It is, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next on the agenda is policies for review.
We have three policies that are up for review and, and in my opinion will be left in review. CEA is superintendent qualifications. Next one down is CEC slash CED, which is superintendent recruitment and appointment. And the last one is JGHA, which is free or reduced price food service. All three of those should remain in review and should be posted as is.
Do you have any discussion on those three policies? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's reports.
Okay. I just have a, a couple of quick items. Number one, I want to express our condolences for Abbeville County Schools who lost their school superintendent due to a head-on car wreck. Very tragic situation and both her and her husband were in the car wreck. Her husband will supposedly recover. The young man that was in the car wreck did not either, so just a horrible situation. Wanted to express our condolences from the school system and from the board. The other item that is on the superintendent's report is T-Mobile. I was sitting in my office in the middle of July, I believe I'd just gotten back from the Gale Conference, and received an email from T-Mobile that they had coverage in Lincoln County, north, southeast and west, totally covering Lincoln County with T-Mobile. So I called them within two, three minutes of receiving the email and said, I don't know that I totally agree with you because I live in Lincoln County, however, what's changed? And they said, well, we've added towers, so we have the opportunity to cover entirely. And I said, well, let me explain our issue. We have one-to-one computer Chromebooks, but our kids can't connect at the house. He says, well, we have these hotspots that you can connect anywhere in Lincoln County and I promise you they'll work. And I said, okay. I said, how about if you send me a demo so that we can try it? And he said, I'd be more than happy to, I'll send you two demos because I know they'll work. So within a couple of weeks, I received two of those hotspots, turned them over to transportation and told transportation to go for a ride, go up 79, go down to Amity, et cetera. They did that. They got maybe a mile outside of the city limits and it quit working. Now, I knew that, I knew that that wouldn't work, but I wanted to take the guy's word for, for what he said, to try it. I got him back and explained to the gentleman that it won't work and he said, well, it's supposed to. And I said, well, you're welcome to come visit, but I know that it doesn't work. And he says, well, maybe it's a little fuzzy out on the edges. I said, no, it does not work. And that's the problem we've had with Verizon and T-Mobile. The reason I want to tell the board that and the community that is we are continuing to try and find every way possible to have our students connected from the furthest ends of the county. Right now, that's not possible, but I am still trying. So I just tried T-Mobile, I'll try anybody else that says it'll work if it will work. So far, I haven't found one that will work. Good night.
Mr. Chair, I have one quick question. Last, last board meeting during our, during the superintendent's. Report. We, we talked about East Georgia, Congress, about the, the military. We were here on that Tuesday night, I believe. I got a Lincoln Journal that Wednesday or Thursday. And prior to our meeting, there had already been a request made to Lincoln City Council, Mr. Chair. And all I'm asking, so that we don't look like we don't know what we're doing, that if those things are going to happen and those requests are going to be made, before anybody go talk to anybody, we should at least be giving the heads up. Because people were calling me and saying, well, y'all just passed this, had a city pass that they going to put the signs up and this and that. And I can understand, you want to get all your ducks in a row, but don't, don't blind, don't let us as board members be blindsided. Because in that paper, you can pick up that paper, it says that they had already approved for signs to be put up around the city. I didn't know anything about that. Y'all might have, I mean, somebody else might have, but I didn't.
Ms. Freeman, we approved them to be in the old school last year.
Yeah, I mean, but I didn't know that the meeting at the city council, let me make myself clear. I didn't know that the meeting at the city council had been requested to do that before the meeting of this board. Look at the dates in the newspaper.
No, but I'm saying, they were already in the school. I'm not sure what your, they were already, had a presence in that old school.
No, I'm not talking about the old school. Did, you don't know about the city council meeting?
They, I didn't go to, but I mean, I got, I get the journal, yes.
Okay, what I'm saying, did you know the superintendent was going to that school? I mean, that organization, that body and request, or did you go and request?
No, ma'am, that had nothing to do with me.
Well, what was that in the paper?
I'm confused. I, I do know that the Development Authority has requested the opportunity to use polls to put up GMC banners, but that was all the Development Authority, which is no different than what he did over at the rec center and put up the East Georgia banner on the rec center.
Right.
That had nothing to do with me, I'm a little confused.
I, I could swear the article said that it was requested by the school system, just.
No, ma'am.
It may, may have been affirmed to Georgia, I mean, the school system or the Georgia military.
Right, maybe. But just as I told the superintendent, that was another issue and I guess because it, yeah, we can, that'll be probably part of your personnel or report for executive session, we'll discuss it after.
All right, you need a motion to go to the executive session?
So moved.
I second. Can I call our meeting back to order? It has been recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Elise Matthews as a long-term substitute for middle school inclusion. Second, by Ms. Madison, all in favor? unanimous? It's been recommended, and I make a motion that we hire April Parks Norman as a part-time transportation secretary position. Second by Ms. Freeman, all in favor? unanimous? It's recommended that we hire Gloria Tuck Harris as a substitute school bus driver upon completion of state and local requirements. Second by Ms. Sparksdale, all in favor? unanimous? It's recommended that we hire Adriana Wimbush as a one-on-one.
Per professional, yes, sir.
A one-on-one parapro.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Freeman, all in favor? unanimous? It's recommended that we increase the hourly rate of lead bags to $68 as a speech pathologist. Second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? unanimous? It's recommended, I make a motion that we hire Ms. Angela Deal as a full-time custodian in high school on a 12-month contract. Second by Ms. Sparksdale, all in favor?
Question, question. You said custodian, you said 12-month contract. When did we start giving custodians a contract?
A few of them.
Huh?
We don't give them contracts, though.
Well, it's not a contract, but it's a position.
12-month position.
12-month position.
Well, somebody tell me something, I, I. But they can quit within that 12 months?
There, there's no contract.
There's no contract?
Right.
So we just.
They serve at the will of the board.
Full-time.
That's what they used to.
They still do.
Okay.
12-month position. I mean, full-time position.
Do I have a second on that? Second by Ms. Madison, all in favor? unanimous? It's recommended, I make a motion that we hire Faith Hill, Penny Chafin and Holly Lawson as, or that they be added to the sub-list for the 2019, 2020 school year. And a second by Ms. Sparksdale, all in favor? unanimous? Tonight, we conducted the superintendent's evaluation. It was found to be satisfactory. Anything else?
A motion to adjourn, if business is concluded.
A second, that a motion?
Okay.
Thank you.